Follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting of the planning board, for this meeting, the planning board is convened by Zoom video conference. As posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Using an internet-enabled device, please go to zoom.us or the Zoom application and enter the meeting ID number. Or you can call in by telephone at eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. Again, it's eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. Tonight's meeting ID is eight three zero zero six one three six six two seven. Meeting ID eight three zero zero six one three six six two seven. Please note, the meeting is being recorded and broadcast over streaming services and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks can see you. Take care to not screen share or broadcast anything you don't want captured on the recording. I see Paula has joined us. You can hear us.
Yes, I can.
All right. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chair.
Excellent. Thank you, Adam. So we will call to order at six thirty-five. Well, I don't know if we called order before the spiel or not, but anyways, public comment. Is there any person wishing to comment? Public or other?
Quick announcement, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder that on Wednesday at seven PM, Greenleaf Botanicals will be holding their second community meeting. Community information meeting. This is going to be conducted via Zoom. It will be recorded. It's going to be broadcast through the town's Zoom. I don't have the information with me. It is posted in the news section on the town website with the link and access information.
Very good. And on that public announcement, I'd like to remind everybody that our town caucus is next Monday at seven o'clock. I believe it's going to be at the middle high school. Is that correct? It's typically been in Turkey Hill, but I think middle high school this year.
They have moved it to the middle high school, with my understanding, to allow for adequate social distancing.
Okay, and I believe it was either Matt or Ryan. It was?
Matt is up this year.
It's me.
It's you.
And I am, I am intending to run for reelection.
Okay. Familiar with it?
Only that I have to be at the town caucus, more so than that, not in particular, because I was a write-in last time.
Okay, well, you just need somebody to nominate you and probably won't be many nominations. We can talk offline about that if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So any other public comment? Okay, our first order of business is with Mr. Roy for A and R at thirty Gilchrist. You have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Appreciate your time this evening. My name is Greg Roy with Dilson Roy, and I'm representing the Northfield Associates for land that is, is known, I think, around town as the Northfield Pool. But is located just north of Northfield Road on Gilchrist Street. The, the Northfield Associates is a group of Ludenburg residents, as far as I know, they're all Ludenburg residents, that all have an ownership in the, in a cooperative manner of the pool and its facilities. They approached me several months ago seeking to create two additional house lots on the, on the property. They did this about twenty years ago as well. There's, there was actually two lots just to the north of this that were subdivided in a very similar fashion. I think it was about twenty years ago nominally. So they had sufficient land to, to create two additional lots, and, and so we've, we've done the work required to both to permit that from an environmental standpoint, both with the Board of Health and with the Conservation Commission. I'll go into the, a little bit more of the history of that in, in a few minutes. And then, of course, before your board this evening is a, is an approval-not-required plan, which I think Adam is pulling up now. Appreciate that, Adam. Or Matt, whoever's doing that. So just, just before I get into the A and R plan, just a quick, just to put the board into context with the other permits that we have. We have applied for, there is a bordering vegetated wetland, as you can see on the plan, if you were able to zoom in close enough. Thank you. And so we, we've gone through the permitting process with the Conservation Commission. They closed their hearing on both lots last week, Wednesday, so we have received, or we will be receiving an order of conditions for those, from the Conservation Commission, for the two lots. We've also conducted soil testing for the two new lots, as well as the existing, as, as well as for the, the lot that will remain, which we're entitling Lot Three, which will, which will continue to house the pool and the appurtenances. The, the septic system for the existing facility needs to be upgraded. The applicant is aware of that. And part of our scope of work was to do that design and submit that to the Board of Health for approval and a permit. So we, we have, we have applied now to, for all three of the lots. Lot one and two have been in for, you know, with the show of board health for a month or so, and, and we expect, you know, that permitting process is, is ongoing. We haven't, we haven't closed that out. We expect that probably later this month. And then with Lot Three, we just submitted that, I think, last week, so that is also an ongoing permit process. So before you this evening are two hammerhead or reduced frontage lots. The property is located in the RA zoning district, which requires forty thousand square feet of, of area. When you, of course, when you reduce the frontage to fifty feet, you, you need two, two times the required, the requirement for area, which we have provided on both of the lots, as well as the prerequisite upland percentage on, on both of the lots as well, which I think we've, we've indicated on the plan. I think, and then, and then just, just to reiterate that Lot Three would be the, would be the lot that would, would continue to contain the pool and, and appurtenances, and Northfield Associates would continue to maintain and operate that in a similar fashion as they have been for, for decades. And the two lots, one and two, the two newer lots in the back would be for, for future building, building lots, which is what we've been tasked to permit, so. I think that is all. Happy to take any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I actually have a couple. I, this is, I'm, I'm not sure the answer of this, but I'm wondering if there's any offset required for the tennis courts. Mr. Bernie?
The tennis court could be considered a structure. It's clearly pre-existing, non-conforming on the line that it's almost touching. I would have to, to verify that with the building commissioner. And I believe it goes to five feet if it's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and five feet back per the zoning.
So I think we need to find that out. I, I see Mr. Roy looking something up, so he might be able to give that answer.
I'll look up the definition of structure for you, Paula.
Okay, great. Thank you. The other question that I have, Mr. Roy, is you mentioned that Lot Three has an existing septic system. Is, is the entire system and any associated fill going to be located on Lot Three?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we have, we, we did, we, we created those property lines to, to be able to, if you could, I can't point at it, but it's, it's sort of off the corner of the pool of the tennis court, excuse me, which is where the system would be. And so there's enough, there's sufficient land area there to keep both the system and all the grading on that, on that lot, on Lot Three.
And that lot line as placed will meet the Board of Health's offset requirements?
Yes.
For septic systems? Okay. Okay.
Kind of backed into it, Paula. We, we kind of laid out the systems and
Okay.
laid out the septic systems and then, and then put houses and then kind of, and then, and then drew the property line, so.
Okay. The the I saw that in the application, a Board of Health endorsement, but I didn't see a signature on it. I saw the form, but I didn't see, at least the one we received didn't have a signature.
We chased that down right before we, we filed.
Yeah, the one in the office had a signature on it.
Okay, because the one that was sent to us did not, so.
And that was the
Form that was, was sent to the planning board, and perhaps you could share that? Are you looking for it, Adam?
I don't, I don't have the file in my hand. I don't, I, I remember seeing the signature. I don't remember if there were comments on it or not, and I can
I could tell you, I could tell you, if it pleases the board, I can give you the little summary on that.
That would be great.
Jim Greffey, this is one of the reasons why I, I mentioned in my opening remarks that we had, we are including upgrade of Lot Three septic system. So of course, and, and I, I, I'm keenly aware that I'm, that Paula is, 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 is aware of these regulations. You cannot divide or aggregate or divide a facility under Title V without proving that your existing septic system will meet current Title V regulations. The division of a facility, as it's defined in Title V, includes both the, both the, the structures on the property and the real property itself. So that's where we, we get the, we get the requirement that any time you subdivide a piece of property, you have to first prove that the existing septic system meets Title V requirements. In this case, we're quite sure that the, while we haven't done a formal Title V inspection, we're quite certain that that it would not pass a Title V inspection. So as part of our work, we included an upgrade of the, and, and the Northfield Associates are, are planning on an upgrade of the existing system. So Jim Greffey's comment, when he signed the application for the, for your A and R, the A and R plan before you, was that he is going to place a condition on the septic permits for lots one and two that says that the certificate of compliance for the, either of those septic systems is not going to be issued until the septic system for Lot Three is constructed. So that's, so the Board of Health, from the Board of Health standpoint, they want to make sure that the system's upgraded, and that's the way they, they plan for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roy. And moving forward, obviously, that kind of information is critical for us to have, so.
Correct. Well, again, I forwarded along the digital copy of the, the submission that came from the applicant. I, I didn't open it, and that's my mistake.
Okay. Yeah, the one we received, Greg, just has the blank one, so that's why.
Really?
Yeah, it just, it didn't have a signature on it.
Okay, huh. Well, that must have been an oversight on our part, because we literally, we spent quite a bit of time on Monday, or Tuesday even. Man, I was Monday, going to, driving to Littleton at Jim's office hours to track him down to get the signature, so if you
How ironic.
I apologize. That was just a oversight on our part. We must not have sent you the, but anyway, that was the, that was the crux of it.
Okay, so, so Lot Three has a proposed system that's entirely on its lot, and there will be a condition on the, of the two additional lots that no certificate of compliance would be issued until Lot Three comes into compliance.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, just so the board knows, the applicant is planning to escrow that amount at closing of the two, at the closing of the two lots. They have a buyer that's interested in the, in the two lots. And they plan to, to escrow that money until such time as they use it to, to build the system, which, which they anticipate to be soon. They're just, they're just want to make sure that the buyer knows, as well as the they, they anticipate that a buyer, looking at the two septic permits that they just bought, seeing a condition that someone else has to do something before they can get a certificate of occupancy, might create a little bit of heartburn on the, on the case of the buyers. So they're planning to, to escrow that money to, to show, you know, to, to, to show, you know, to show the buyers that that, that they're, you know, legitimately working towards that, so.
Okay, okay. And were you able to find the definition, definition of structure?
I was. If it, if it pleases the board, I'll just read it, and we can, we can all, we can all see what we think about interpretation. But hang on, let me read it. I'll try not to do too much alliterative emphasis. Any construction, erection, assemblage, or other combination of materials upon the land necessitating pilings, footings, or a foundation for attachment to the land, excluding fences, but including all indoor or outdoor swimming pools, whether or not so attached, and equipment and appurtenances there too, when the pool is used for landscaping, swimming, or bathing, and has twenty-four or more inches of depth, and has a surface of seventy, seventy-five or more square feet, and all other structures of over one hundred and twenty square feet. So if I can read the first line again, and I'll give you my interpretation, and again, I, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not the end-all, the be-all here, but any construction, erection, assemblage, or other combination of materials upon the land necessitating piles, foundations, or footings for attachment to the land. I guess that's up to interpretation. I, this is, the tennis courts are a paved surface with no, you know, no foundation, as I would consider in the, you know, we're not talking about a sonnet tube or a pile or a typical spread foundation. And it specifically excludes fences, the definition, so the fence would certainly, surrounding the tennis courts would certainly not, would not, would not meet the definition. So I'm, I'm aware that certainly the interpretation on the, on this issue would fall with the, with the building inspector. But I mean, I guess the way I read it, the plainface reading, I, I don't see that a tennis court would rise to the definition of a structure, given that it doesn't require a pile, it doesn't have or require a piling footing or foundation, per se. But
My question is, does a, does it require a footing? I don't know anything about tennis court construction. Is it simply a cleared area that has pavement on it? Or does it require some type of footing for, for, you know, frosties or whatever? Does anyone?
It's very similar to roads. They, it, it's, it's essentially, it's a patio with a, with a special surface on it.
Okay.
And, and patios don't fall into the structure category.
I, I would agree with that in, in the road. I mean, if, you know, it would be a road, it would be very similar to a road. You'd prep the subbase like a road. And then it's either, I can't remember, I think this one's asphalt, so you're just talking about a paved surface. Some of them are concrete, some of them are clay, but this one isn't clay. But, you know, so the only things that would have foundations there would be the fence, which is specifically excluded, and the, probably the net, right, the post for the net, but I think that would be well outside of the, of the, where the nets are, I think would be midpoint of the, of the, the fence lines there, and they'd be outside of the, they'd be, they wouldn't have a zoning compliance of where we're drawn, issue with where we're drawing the, the line.
If, if I can pipe in here, I don't see a problem at all with the tennis courts. The only question I would have is my understanding of the fences is up to six feet can be at the property line, and anything taller than that has to be stepped back equally as far as it is tall. Are they ten-foot tall fences or?
Interesting question. Yeah, they're taller than six feet, for sure.
I think up to eight, you just need a permit. Once it hits ten, the, the building code defines it as a structure.
Well, then we're back to the fences being excluded from the definition of structure and building code defining it as structure.
Yeah, that's a conundrum.
Yeah, I don't, and fence is not a defined term in your definitions section that I can see.
Yeah, but I think we would go with the building code. I mean, I think the building code would trump, right?
I mean, the building code and, and zoning don't always line up with one another as far as the way they define things.
Okay, but if the building code calls it a structure, I guess that would have to be a call by the building official, depending on the height of the fence. Has he had an opportunity to look at this plan?
He has. It's been sent up to his office. I have not received a comment from him yet. What's the distance from the fence to the property line?
Yeah, I'm trying to open, open that up right now. Bear with me here. This is amazing. You can just, you can use AutoCAD right in the middle of a public meeting. One second.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting, it, the question I had was on the topo. Are we waiving the topo requirement? Or I didn't get a topo in my packet, but
Oh, I don't.
I didn't either.
I thought it was sent out in the email that went out on Thursday. We only received one copy of the topo. I, I apologize if the packets went out to Marjorie's normal stuff, snuff. She was out last week, and I was trying to put them together. There is a topo as, as shown.
So to answer your question, the fence is actually set back twelve point three three feet from the property line, so I, I can't imagine it's over twelve feet tall. I don't know how tall it is, but twelve feet, I would think, would be pretty, so.
I thought it was, I thought it was, if it's over ten feet, not, Mr. Chair, I don't.
Adam came up with the ten-foot thing. I don't, I'm not aware.
Okay.
Well, someone said that it had to be set back as far as the, it would have to be set back as high as the fence. And so the, the, the closest corner of the fence is twelve point three three feet, so the fence would have to be greater than twelve point three three feet high in order to be, not meet that requirement, if that requirement did exist. I don't know of that requirement, but.
And, and the rear yard setback would only be five feet for a detached structure. So it, it, the fence would, would qualify as a detached accessory structure, and it would be a five-foot setback. And then the additional, we, odd language we have in about being set back no more than five feet, more than the height of the, the structure is, is in there, but.
Is that not, is that not a principal building, though? I mean, I
It, it may be. I, I know that it's, it's there and and that, yeah, you're right, that is on this principal building, and that's a building height restriction.
Yeah, I mean, I've gotten into that regulation when I've, when I've been looking for variances on, on, for, for houses, but I don't know that I've had that.
Yeah, and, and it's only five feet for the accessory detached structure.
Yeah. So I don't know if that is a question.
So the tennis court then meets the requirements, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, even if it's defined as a structure?
Well, especially if it's defined as an accessory structure.
Right.
Which I don't know how else you'd define it. I mean, it's, it'd be hard to classify a fence as a primary structure, unless, of course, it was a tennis facility we had here, but, yeah.
Okay, so the, the only other question I have is that, excuse me, the, the upland area requirement. You said you, you, you met the percentage, but it is under two acres. That's not a, the, the upland area doesn't have to meet the two acres?
Well, I think you have to be, you can only, the way the bio is written is you can only have ten percent of the, I think it's written in the, in the converse, so ten percent of your air, lot area can be wetlands. So this is a pretty, this is tricky. So what that says to me is you have to have ninety percent of your lot, required lot area is upland, which, which we have. I mean, I could draw these lines, you know, in a, in a weird manner, and, and lop off an additional bunch of wetlands and just call it a parcel to, to meet that, right? But so there's additional wetland land that would be given to each of these lots, but we have more than the required area. Think, I think you'll find that we meet, that we meet that regulation in virtue of the fact that we have greater than seventy-two thousand square feet of upland area on each lot.
I think the way it's worded says, the lot cannot have more than ten percent of the required lot area as wetlands, steep slope, or land underwater.
Right, so.
So if you have thirty acres and twenty-six of it is wetland, you could theoretically build two, two-acre lots in that.
Yeah, and the lot, but the, the lots would have, it's, it's funny, because the lots would have more than the, than ten percent, but it's, they would not have, but it, it relates to the minimum, you know, you're really only looking at eighty percent. The required lot area is eighty, eighty thousand square feet in this case, because it's, it's double, because we're doing reduced frontage. We can only have ten percent, we're only allowed ten percent of that to be wetlands, is the way the reg, the, the reg reads, which is eight thousand square feet, which means that we have to have at least seventy-two thousand of upland. And then all we've done is we've given the additional wetland back to the lot, if that makes any sense.
Yep, it works out in my mind now.
I have one question for the board. I, I called up the topo on my computer just to look at it quickly. And I don't know what the standards are. This is probably fine, but the, there's a six-foot, for Lot One, along the road, there's roughly a six-foot change in elevation, so a twelve percent grade. That, I, I don't, I haven't read anything that says that affects the accessibility of the lot, but y'all have been doing this longer than I have. So I wanted to call that up in case that's an issue.
Well, they'll probably apply for a common driveway?
I don't know, Matt. I think that the buyer that they have right now is looking to do single driveways.
It's going to be tight.
Yeah, it's fifty feet. Each, each of those strips is fifty feet, so it looks tight on this plan, but you know, you got, you got area there. And, you know, there would certainly be some grading. I don't think it's, it's significant. Right at the road, I think we definitely would have to drop that grade. There's a bank at, right at the road that we'd have to drop. As you get back into the lot there, I, I, I don't think, I don't think any part of the driveway is going to approach twelve percent by the time they're done with it.
No, the, the longitudinal slope is, wouldn't have to be a whole lot, because it's parallel with the contours.
Right.
So
We'd be, we'd be tying in on a, a section of road there, but that would just be the apron, and then we'd be transitioning into so.
Well, I don't think that the fire department would consider that a, a, a non-accessible, but it is going to be at the, the buyer's peril, I guess, if it, if it doesn't work out. I don't see any easements for grading. You, you think you can get the, the driveway in there without having to go over the lot lines on grading?
Yeah, I do. I, I mean, again, we got fifty feet on each of those, on each of those strips. So I, yeah, I think, I think we'll be, I think we're in good shape there, Matt. I, I mean, I, we've taken a quick look at it. We, you know, not knowing exactly where the buyer wants to go, we haven't designed them yet, but we, I, I did enough review to, to know that I don't, I don't believe we need any grading easements there. And if, for whatever reason they did, they could all, always put those on record later, but I don't, I don't anticipate that.
Mr. Chair, I had a question about the driveway for Lot Three. Is there an existing driveway there now?
There, there is, and it's a loop driveway. Yeah, it doesn't show on your plan, but it, it There, there is, um, and it's a loop driveway. Yeah. It doesn't show on your plan, but it, it, um. And I can't point, but it, uh. It, it's further south on Gil, Gilchrist Street. It's kind of like between the pool. Uh, the long side of the pool and the road and it, yeah, like that. Yes. Right in there. It's a, yeah, it's a looped and then there's some parking. It's, it's a gravel driveway to answer your question. And it's just a, uh, there's two. You know, two ins and outs right there on a, on a looped driveway configuration. And we're not, we're not proposing to change any of that. That would just mean, that would just stay as is.
Okay. So the major concerns I've heard are the proximity of the existing tennis court to the new lot line and, um, the access. And the wetlands. I think that the wetlands issue has been explained away. How do we feel about the proximity and the access? Do we think that they're adequate? From what we've heard.
I think that it's really, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's at the applicant's peril if the, if the. Building commission determines it's not adequate access or the fire department determines not adequate access. Then they wouldn't be able to develop it. I mean, that's what I think I'm hearing.
Yeah. I, I only raised the concern, uh, out of, uh, to make sure that it wasn't so steep that it was considered, uh. Non-valid frontage. So we couldn't approve it just because we're required to have that, that level.
Right.
Um, so I don't, I'm fine with it being at their peril. That's, that is their concern and.
Well, that's a good question. Matthew is, is, is it? Is it accessible? And, and I have no. I'm going to count on the experts to mention that.
Well, I, if I could, Mr. Chair, um. Yeah, I, I think, well, I've, I've gone on record now saying that it's accessible and I'm, I'm, I'm very confident in that, but be, be that as it may. You, um, I think you're correct in saying, and Adam, you can pipe it if I'm, if I'm. If I'm incorrect here, but I think you're correct in saying that it's not really the, the planning. Under an A and R plan, it's not really. Your endorsement isn't saying that it has valid access. The building inspector would say that. Could, could, could disagree with the fact that we have with me that we have valid access, as could the fire department. In a similar manner that. You know, if I come to you, you know, a month ago and created these lots and then the conservation commission didn't give me a permit, they could, they. They, they could deny it on a separate permit tract too. So I think that, you know, um. It's separate, the, the issues are separate. But having said that, I, like I said, I. You know, I've walked the property. We've walked the property with the, with the proposed builder. I mean, I, I, we've surveyed it. I'm, I'm pretty confident that we have a accessible, uh, accessible frontage there.
The board could find that the access wasn't adequate and was. Illusory, but I, I, I don't think that's the case in this situation. I think that what's identified is that there. Are some challenges to access, but it's not as if it's a, a mountain either up or down. Uh, and they're using the public way just to create lots that there'll be access in some other way that, that it isn't available. I mean, that is a, a, a reason why they can deny the A and R. Looking at this, um. Again, as you said, I think there's grading. I think there's some, some work to be done to make it. An easy driveway and to meet the bylaw, but it doesn't seem that the, the access is, uh. Not really there, uh, or just, just shown on paper.
And then as far as the structure goes, your third point there, Mr. Chair, I, I mean, I think that, um, I think that it could only be classified as an accessory structure. Your, your bylaws, um, were clearly more than 150 feet back from the road. So. You would be in the, um, five foot offset category. The closest point of the fence is 12.33 feet to the proposed property line. Uh, so we would meet that anyway.
Yep. I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with that. Um, I don't know how the other members feel.
As am I.
I'm comfortable.
My, my only comments would be, I, I feel like we've been working, and this is more in general. I feel like we've been working on. Streamlining the A and R process and making it smoother for the applicant and the board. In terms of getting this stuff in front of the Board of Health and getting building inspector review. And. Now we've got an application that wasn't endorsed by the town clerk. Wasn't endorsed by the Board of Health, hasn't seen the building inspector. And it's just, I feel bad for the applicant, honestly, because I feel like we can go ahead and prove it. But we're putting them in a compromised position where we could have gotten all of these issues worked out in advance. I mean, at our last meeting, we modified an A and R. Because it didn't meet Board of Health approval and they needed easements and, um, so on. So. You know, I don't necessarily have any issues with this particular application. I just wish it was complete.
I'm, I'm just surprised to hear that because we, I appreciate your looking out for us, Mr. Cole. I. I mean, I, I can assure the board that we. Not only do we take it to Mr. Greffy in another town to get his sign off on the application. But we definitely took it to the town clerk, much to our, we took it to the town clerk. She signed it and then we walked it over to the. Planning office on prior to Tuesday. So both of those things have been done. Now. The building commissioner's review, I don't think that's something that the applicant is required to chase down, but. But both of the Board of Health and the, and the, uh, the clerk's. Signature were, were done prior to submittal.
Yeah, no, I'm not doubting that in any way. I'm just saying that the packet I have.
You didn't get it. Yeah.
In front of me, I, unless the other members have a different packet and I'm just mistaken, but there's no signature from. The town clerk with a stamp. There's no signature on the Board of Health and it just, even the topo, the electronic version that was displayed isn't. Complete, you know, and so I, I feel bad because I, it, it might be the waters when we're trying to. Get things done quickly. A lot of these questions that we have, we could just rifle through and move on. So that's all.
I completely concur, Mr. Cole.
Yes. Yeah. Um, and, and Mr. Roy, this is, I, I, I don't believe this is directed at you or your, or your, um, your client. Um, we've been. We've been struggling with issues internal, um, and we're, we're making headway. We are. I think we are. So. Back to the plan in front of us. Are we satisfied with the fence and the access being at the peril of the applicant?
I am.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we? Well. I, I think that the, the accessibility is, well, not, not meeting, not meeting our standards and accessibility are the only two things that we have to deny. In A and R. So. If, if that's correct, Adam? Frontage and area?
Yeah. I, I mean, not even the area, just having, having adequate frontage on a. Existing public way, uh, and not submitting per the board's requirements. I mean, there's other more minute details, but. It doesn't sound like the board is opposed to this A and R.
I would, uh, I would agree with that. Um. So, uh, if, unless anybody else has, uh, questions, concerns or comments, um, I would. Be looking for a motion, I guess.
I'd make a motion to, um. Uh, approve or whatever the correct term is, the A and R for 30 Gil, Gilchrist Street. Second.
Okay. I think Tanner beat Paula. Um, very good. Um, any further discussion?
I would just ask that, um, we make sure that a copy of the Board of Health, uh, signed endorsement is included in the file.
Yep. We can do that, Adam?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Um, excellent. So we'll have to, uh, do roll call. Um, all in favor? Paula?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Excellent. Um, thank you. Um, and also have you gotten your. Mylar from the last meeting yet? Greg?
I did. Thank you very much for that.
Okay. Okay.
And thank you very much for your time this evening. And we will do our part, we'll do our part to, uh, to stream, streamline our part. So I apologize for the. If, if any of this was, was on us, we'll, uh, we'll certainly, uh, certainly streamline it, but, but what we.
Sure. So you're not going to tell us that you're not in any.
Right.
Okay.
Always want to work with the town. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we can all make it into the planning office and, and sign the Mylar. That would be great.
Thanks.
All right. Um. So now we're onto, uh, public hearing, rules and regulations for site plan approval and special permits.
We are.
Do I have, do I have the, uh, thing to read?
Uh, you know, I don't know that it, uh.
I don't see that I do. Is it in the?
I don't think it was in the email either. Let me pull it up.
You know, Adam, I'm going to give you a pass this time because Marjorie was out.
And unexpectedly so.
I, I can imagine how much you depend on her.
I do. She, I will. She, she does all of the administrative bits and pieces. Uh, where do I? All right. So. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 8th, 2021, 6:35 via Zoom video conference. To discuss revisions to the Planning Board Rules and Regulations for Site Plan Approval and Special Permits. Materials are available for viewing at the Planning Office 960 Massachusetts Ave, Lunenburg, Massachusetts. In accordance with the Governor's Order superseding certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. All public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast through local access cable on Facebook Live. On the planning, on the public access Facebook page. And will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. Uh, to participate remotely from a computer, please use the link below to join the public meeting. So. This is to change pages nine and 12 of the Planning Board. Rules and Regulations for Site Plan and Special Permit to. Remove the submission of half-size copies and, uh. Flip them all back to full size 24 by 36 so the board can have a large format to view their, their submissions in. So that was page nine. And this is page 12 for the supplemental data.
I apologize. I don't have the agenda up. Which one do we do? Which attachment are we doing first?
This is the, uh, public hearing for the Rules and Regulations for Site Plan and Special Permit.
Okay.
So, um, just to be clear, that everything, everything that's not read is existing in our bylaw?
Correct. That is, it, these are, these are the rules and regulations.
Okay. Yes. So the only changes are in red.
Correct.
Right. So, um. We've worked on this over the past, uh, what, six, eight months? Not, not quite maybe?
No, I mean, this, this comes from a request from the board to have larger format plans to review. Uh, in order to have, uh, better access and better ability to scale and understand what's on the plans as opposed to reviewing. Uh, half or quarter scale plans in 11 by 17 format.
All right. So I, I misspoke. So probably six or eight meetings. We talked about it or it's been on. So this is kind of odd. We don't, we have a public hearing. I don't think we have any public. And this is work that we have accomplished as a group. In the recent past. Um, so, uh, because I'm required to, I'll ask if there's any public comment.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. So, um, I mean, we, there's really nothing to do, right? I mean, we.
We need a motion and a vote.
Yeah. Do we need to close the hearing first?
Aye.
Well, okay, we're going to close the hearing and then we'll talk.
Or you can talk now. It, it.
Okay. So I guess, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. If you have some.
Sorry. So I'm confused about why in one section we say we want 18 plans and then in section 4.2, we say we want 12.
Uh, 4.2 is the resubmission. Oftentimes those plans are limited who they're redistributed to. So that's the supplemental information to address specific comments.
Okay.
Historically, it has not been, uh. A necessity that it goes to all the folks that see the, the original. Uh, if you'd like to bump it back up to 18, we can do that.
I was just confused about the difference in the, in the number.
Yeah, that's because those are supplemental information.
Okay. Um. And as is what I do, um, I didn't, I didn't realize it was just that section that we were changing. And I actually have a couple of questions if the chair would indulge me.
Of course.
Um, it talks about on page 11, our, the fee structure. And that was adopted in 2006. And out of curiosity, what is our fee structure and why haven't we revised it since 2006? It's section 3.4?
On page 11?
Well, it's section 3.4. According to my comments, it's page 11, but.
Uh, our fee schedule is what is posted on the webpage. Uh, it is graduated by number of parking spaces. It certainly could be updated. Uh, there's no reason not to. The board has never raised an issue with it, uh, but I can certainly do a comparison and present the board with a, an updated fee schedule.
Okay. I just think it might be, are looking at in comparison to other communities that seemed like a long time to go. Without revising our fee schedule. In. I was also confused in the section about appeal, um, and the numbering is odd. It's G5 in section. I don't know where it is.
That's the appeal of the 53G account and the selected consultant.
Right.
So that's language directly from the statute.
Okay. Cause it appears that if the town fails to act, the planning board decision stands. That just seems a little odd to me. Normally it defaults the other way. If the town fails to act, then it's appealed. So for example, you know, if the, if a. Inspection is done after the, the time has elapsed for which to comply with that inspection, it's considered approved. I just thought the wording in this was odd.
So this is an appeal. So if we chose, if we say to an applicant, we use Graves for our third party review. And they say, we appeal that and they go to the board, the select board. And the select board doesn't act, Graves continues to be our review engineer rather than us having to go out and find some. rather than us having to go out and find someone new.
I completely understand what it says. It just seems odd to me. So if the town, if the town doesn't act, then our decision stands. So we really don't have an appeal process because if the town doesn't act, our decision stands. Just an observation.
I mean, it would give them the opportunity to go to judicial review and I would, I would find it unlikely that the selectmen wouldn't, at a minimum, have a hearing. And I think that would be the, that would consider, that would be considered action. If after a month, the select board had not done, anything hadn't scheduled to hear, hadn't begun the process, that would be a lack of action.
Okay. And then on Planning Board Right of Access forms, I was confused why they're lettered under number 25, under construction details. It starts with letter G. But I don't know where, what the numbering is continuing from or the lettering.
So F is site plan and it includes all of the numbers. And then G is the next, the next bullet point in the list of application materials.
Wow, okay.
So everything to 25 is a list of what's included in the plan requirements. G is the next, is the next thing on the list.
Okay.
It's an indentation issue.
Yeah, because it's very hard to follow.
Because if you look from F, they're indented more and some of the formatting.
So I mean, that I can, that I can adjust when I finalize with the new plan set numbers.
Okay. On page 11, under stormwater, this says shall be designed in accordance with the Mass Department of Environmental Protection Handbook. I thought in a previous document, we had changed that because in some instances, we don't require strict compliance.
Okay, that was, that was changed. Yeah, that was changed in the stormwater bylaw.
So I think we want to adjust that because they contradict each other. And then under de minimis changes, I just have a comment on the drainage on number three, under section 4.4. I would like it to say minor changes to drainage rather than just drainage because drainage is a huge component of our review. And I wouldn't necessarily consider a major change to drainage as a de minimis change. Just my comment. And that's all I have.
Where was that last one, Paula?
On page 13.
Section 4.4.
Number three. And I guess my comment to that would be, I think that's a reasonable clarification. De minimis change isn't required to ever be approved by the board. Someone can request that and the board can determine through that request if what they're proposing meets what the board feels is a de minimis change. So, you know, I understand what you're saying. I don't think it's a carte blanche that all drainage changes would be considered de minimis.
Yeah. So when we, when, you know, minor changes to water and/or sewer is the way it works is in number six. I just think adding that to number three. Minor changes to drainage.
Good. So if it was just the indent, then we probably could go ahead and move forward with this public hearing. But since it's not, we probably shouldn't.
I just want to read the ad. It just says to discuss revisions. The original revision was posted as the update in, in set numbers. I don't know that either of what Paula is mentioning would be significant changes that would alter the document in a way that wasn't consistent with changes to it. I think minor is clarification word. And I think in the stormwater section, having it match the language of the stormwater bylaw is within the wheelhouse. I might suggest that the board continue the hearing and I send you the language changes for those two areas. If that's something that the majority of the board would like, and then we can reconvene at the next meeting to finalize those.
Okay, I guess, and that's, that's all above board and but-
Yeah, but the ad doesn't, doesn't reference a specific section. It says to make changes to the rules and regulations.
Okay.
And, and if you're not voting on them tonight, people have the opportunity to view this and see what was said and proposed, and if they have comments and concerns to attend at the next hearing and voice those concerns.
Very good point. Yep. Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? We'll just continue the hearing?
I am. Where does that leave us as far as publishing in the warrant, though?
This doesn't go in the warrant.
Oh, this doesn't, this is rules and regulations.
Correct. This is, this is just the board. This is, once you guys approve this at the public hearing, you're, you're good. It goes into effect.
Yep, I'm good with that.
The only comment I would make is, would it be possible to take the suggestions we've heard tonight and update the copy that's being advertised? Just so, I feel like if we're going to continue the hearing in the interest of soliciting input, then we should try to make those changes public knowledge in some way.
Yeah, I'll make those changes and post it on the website. It'll probably be Wednesday before I can get them up there, but-
Okay, sounds good.
Is it worthwhile, and this is more of just a procedural question of what standard, is it worthwhile approving what we have in front of us now if we agree to it and then opening a new one for these other minimal changes so that we have large-scale plans in our hands sooner? Or is that just not a go-to for any number of reasons?
I mean, I guess that's, that's up to the board. There is a cost because we advertise and so there's the cost of legal advertisement. There's the offset of time between placing that advertisement and holding the hearing. It's-
Do we not have to advertise if we're continuing a hearing?
Correct. Once you continue, it's already been advertised and the continuance is thus advertised at this meeting by, by the board taking a vote.
Understood. That's, that makes sense to me then. That's fine. I thought we had advertise either way. Now I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we need a roll call vote to continue?
That's correct.
Unless there's any further discussion, I'll take that down now. All in favor of continuing this public hearing? By roll call, Paula?
To a time and date, well, please.
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing to March 22nd at 6:35 PM.
Very good. I jumped on. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor by roll call? Paula?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. We are officially renewed. Next, we have minutes approval. I think Marjorie's out this afternoon, this morning?
She sent them out this afternoon. I left them on there in, in hopes that she would have them completed. I completely understand if the board hasn't had time to read them.
I actually did read them.
I did as well. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of February 22nd.
I'd second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor by roll call? Paula?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Minutes approved. Now we're on to committee reports. Stormwater Task Force. We actually are going to meet. We haven't met, so there's no report, but we will be meeting, I believe, the 23rd. We'll be meeting this month. And we'll be meeting with the new DPW director and our consultant, CEI. The Agricultural Commission has not met. We'll be meeting next week on Thursday. TCP Building Design met last week and it was another time we didn't have the architects or the engineers. I think we're pretty much gone through that budget for, for them. And so we're not going to get a lot more substantive work from them. They still do, oh, a few things on the contract, but the majority of the meeting was talking about where to go from here. We discussed a letter that's been drafted to bring the board, the select board into, into the loop and have a discussion with them. We're questioning the charge because, because of the new, because of the new figures for the teardown versus the redesign. We, we would require a change in the charge to, from building and land to building and/or land. Apparently, it doesn't work the way it's written to tear it down by our charge. Other than that, it was relatively uneventful. Nothing new really. I mean, we're going to have the conversation with the select board next, next step. And then there will be something at town meeting that is still kind of up in the air. I'm pretty sure, I'm fairly confident that no one in the group is comfortable suggesting that the town spend the estimated amount. But that's that. So the open space ad hoc, maybe?
Mr. Chair, I, yes, I just had a question on the TCP situation. I mean, my understanding of, and this isn't the charge, this is the warrant article that was approved at town meeting was to take that $250,000, get a cost estimate and bring it to town meeting. So is, what I'm understanding from your report is that it may or may not go to town meeting? Like, I'm just trying to get my head around the warrant article that was approved at town meeting was to get a cost estimate. And I realized that that cost estimate is, exceeds what it would be to tear the building down and start from scratch. So why would you move forward with renovating a 60-year-old building when you can build a new one for the same amount of money? But I, I guess the part I'm struggling with is I feel like now we're at the point where, where beyond what the warrant article approved at town meeting.
So I mean, as far as the warrant article approved at town meeting, the group has, has done its, its, its duty and it has a cost estimate. I just, I think it's going to be a presentation at town meeting on that cost estimate. But as far as the recommendation is what I'm questioning. And I don't think it's very clear yet. The, the group felt a need to have some dialogue with the select board.
Okay. And I guess my only follow-up to that is, I mean, I've been a little bit of a broken record with the master plan and trying to get on the same page with the Board of Selectmen about town facilities. And I feel like over the past five to 10 years, we went through the TAPAY, we went through the VERTEX. Now we went through the TCP and spent $250,000 in engineering and we just keep slowly working in circles here with no output. I mean, the TAPAY and building reuse goes back like 10 years now. And at the end of the day, we still have old primary, we still have TCP and nothing's changed. So I just, I feel like as a planning board, it's our responsibility to kind of spearhead this effort and get it headed in a positive direction. I mean, I feel bad for the taxpayers. I mean, we've spent at least a half a million dollars and we have no tangible output. Zero. I mean, we just spent 250 in engineering at TCP to get a cost estimate for something that's never going to get built. I mean, that's a whole heck of a lot of money to spend to get nothing.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with, with pretty much anything that you just said. My understanding is that the town manager has said that it's doable and is actually considered that the higher number, the 21 million in conjunction with the needing to do something with the Turkey Hill sometime down, down the road. And she said that the numbers would work. But as far as getting town meeting to buy into that big number to renovate a 70-year-old building, it's a question.
Yeah. And I mean, you don't have to take anything away from the work that was done to explore TCP. I'm just looking at it in, in kind of a 10,000-foot view of all of the work that's been done over the 10 years. And we really don't have a tangible direction. And, you know, even on our agenda from, you know, meeting to meeting, I feel like there needs to be a little more effort applied to the master planning component. I mean, we got our population data back that, months ago, and we aren't writing the chapters. We aren't moving any of this stuff in a positive direction. And I mean, the facilities are a huge cost for the town. And I think it's only, you know, smart of us to kind of plan and be as strategic as we can with the way we're spending the money. That's all. So.
Okay. No, I agree with most of that, too. Anything else?
No, no, I just, I mean, maybe instead of doing workshops on rules and regs, we take some time and work on planning. We've got a couple of chapters that we've all selected that make sense. And I feel like we just, the town would benefit greatly from our attention to these situations. So.
Yes, I believe they would.
I agree.
I was going to ask a similar question later in the evening. So yeah, I'm also on board.
So we'll do the next workshop. We'll move into master planning.
Super. I think we're ready for you, Paula. Open space?
We haven't met since our last meeting.
Capital planning.
Oh, sorry. Unfortunately, I missed the meeting last week, so I will have to, and I haven't had a chance to catch up with the chair. It was on Thursday night and I was out of town.
Okay. Monarch Regional Planning Commission.
MRPC, MRPC met last week on Thursday. I also unfortunately had to miss that meeting and I have not had the opportunity to review the YouTube footage yet, but I'll report back to us next time.
Okay. And the Joint Transcendation Commission?
Is on Wednesday.
Very good. So now we're on to our workshop. Chapter 325 subdivision regulations, procedure for submission and review of plans.
And actually, Mr. Chair, I prefer to go with B first, which is the parking, which we were talking about trying to get onto town meeting.
Okay, let's do that.
So this is the distillation of the previous long and winding chapter that we had. And in compiling this, I realized that I was using an old- And in compiling this, I realized that I was using an older version of the use table that excluded the marijuana establishments. So you'll find them highlighted on this table. In crafting the non-medical marijuana bylaw, there was a lot of discussion about how we should be looking at these uses in placing them in zones where similar uses would be. So I tried to place them into similar parking structures as their respective use. If the board wants to talk about pulling them out and creating specific parking requirements for them, that's certainly something we can look at tonight. But one would infer that they're probably pretty similar to parking requirements as outlined in some of these other facilities.
Is marijuana transporter really something that needs to be in this?
Well, it's a use. My recollection was the board wanted to codify parking for all the uses to avoid having to do that in some other way. Granted, we could place that into the adult use category with marijuana transporter or frankly, any of these uses and say shall be determined as part of the special permit. I think that would probably be the other alternative to placing them where I have them currently placed.
Yeah, so I can't imagine a building that's dedicated just to marijuana transportation. But, okay. You did what we asked you to do.
And again, it may not be a whole building. It might be it might be an office in a strip mall that they use as a headquarters to park their vehicles where their employees report for work and sign in and sign out and do those type of things. And so they're going to need some parking for the folks that work there.
Sure.
As well as whatever company's vehicles.
So I had a few questions on this, if I may.
Yes, please.
I think mostly on the front page, looking at bed and breakfast. I see one pace, one space per sleeping room plus one space per three employees on the largest shift. I was wondering where the one space per three employees came from.
It was the most common bed and breakfast parking requirement. And I think the, I think it comes from often bed and breakfasts are operated by owners who reside at the location. And so there's a more, there's less of a need for parking because there's a live-in component.
Given that, could we revise it to plus one space per employee that does not live at the residence or not?
You could certainly do that.
Oh, I like that.
For non-residents.
There you go. That was the word I was looking for.
Next one down on hotel motel. This was just another question. So I understood the one space per sleeping room plus one place space per employee in the largest shift. And I understand, as I thought through the conference or restaurant space, and I thought through, okay, I get why it's not parking like a normal restaurant. Because in theory, people eating at the hotel would likely also be residents. So I'm curious where the one space per 200 square feet came from. I'm not going to pretend I have a great answer on what it should be. I'm just trying to understand the logic behind it.
Again, it's what I have seen across a number of communities, both locally and nationally. And I think it leans towards the fact that even if many of the diners are from the hotel or motel, it will certainly draw some people from outside. In addition, it addresses the conference space, which will have the potential for non-customer, one hotel customers to be attending events or conferences.
So to speak to that, I've been to a number of conferences at hotels and oftentimes the parking is rather haphazard. There's parking on landscaped areas and it's packed. So maybe we could separate the conference from the restaurant and saying per 100 square feet of conference and 200 square feet of restaurant? Because I agree that the restaurant is not going to draw as many people that aren't staying there as a conference would.
If we want to separate them, why would we not look at using restaurant seats? Maybe one space per four or five seats for restaurant and one space per you know, again, what I've seen, it doesn't go down so low as 100 square feet of conference area. But if that's what the board wants, I don't see us having a huge run on conference centers.
No, I don't either. It was just a thought. I'm not, I'm not.
And again, I'm completely open to that. I think that's a reasonable way to approach it.
So would we likely maybe double the cut in half the required parking for per seat or per table as a restaurant?
One per three now, I would say probably go to one to five would be the reasonable. Not quite double it.
The problem is that, and I don't think, I don't think there's a way to address this in the parking by law. I'm just trying to, I'm thinking of the hotels I've been to that have this glorious restaurant. I mean, even in just kind of outskirts towns too, like the hotel where they also have a restaurant as a major business component versus the hotel that just has a tiny little half kitchen somewhere that's throwing out food as needed for the guests. And they're going to vastly different parking needs. I'm not really sure how to distill that down or if it's worth distilling down, frankly.
Well, if it's a, if it's a half kitchen throwing out food for guests, they're probably going to have limited or no seating. It's going to be all room service. And then probably wouldn't qualify as a restaurant or would have limited seating, so would require limited additional parking. And if we get into something like you've got over in Broad and where they have a viable restaurant operating at the inn and it's drawing people, they're going to have more seats. They're going to require more parking. And I think that you know, you look at how many people are coming from accommodations there to eat and try and balance that.
That makes sense.
Is that what the board would like to do?
Well, I don't want to be the only one.
I like, I like what has been suggested by pulling out conference space and having restaurant with a lower, but still significant parking requirement per seat. I think that makes sense.
As do I.
And are we at five per seat, one per five with the restaurant or one per four?
On the conversation, I feel that five would be, would be a decent number. I could go either way on that one, too.
I'm fine with one per five.
Yeah, I like five.
And are we staying 200? Are we going down to 100 or 150 for this conference?
Well, I just started to play my head. Should we balance the likelihood of getting a conference here or not? But I think that's kind of moot. If we get one, we get one and it should be the right number, but and you said this was an average of the local area.
This is one that I've seen fairly consistently amongst those who call out conference space.
So I'm hearing, and this is all anecdotal largely, but that one per 200 or yeah, one per 200 square feet is pretty typical. And it's pretty typical to have bad parking at conference centers. Therefore, I don't think it hurts us to go a little more aggressive and maybe look at 150 or one. I'm open. I don't know what the right number is. I don't know if it needs double parking. But I think adding more isn't going to hurt much.
Well, it increases paved surfaces, it increases runoff, it increases costs, it increases the required area of land. So I mean, it does, it trickles down. But at the same time, people at the parking can be a hazard. I would, I would be comfortable with 150. Because 150, you could probably get 10 people in 150, 10, 12 people.
Yeah, and I think that a lot of times when you look at conference space, there's also going to be, you know, a lot of either table space or vendor booth area that gets taken up depending on the type of conference it is.
That's a good point. Now, since it is a conference, though, I'll be sitting, right? I mean, could we do seats there as well?
I, well, I think you could, but I think that what happens with that is you get into conference centers using a lot of, hosting a lot of different types of events. There are lunch events where people come and have keynote speakers and breakout classes. There are trade show events where people are knowing about a trade show and go into a presentation here or there. So the space ends up being fairly flexible. So you're trying to calculate parking based on a majority of use and not, I mean, I think it's almost impossible to account for every potential use that someone could stuff into a conference center.
Sure. Yep.
So I mean, I think going down to 150 does accomplish additional parking space without being perhaps overly aggressive. And especially since I think if we were to get a facility like this, it's going to be a one of.
Mr. Chair, I'd be comfortable with the one space per 200. What I'm trying to balance in my mind is for somebody that's looking to develop this use or take an existing use and improve it, expand it. Nowadays, you have so many other things to deal with in terms of setback from the street and wetlands and stormwater and detention basins that you get in a spot where you gobble up a lot of your real estate just trying to meet all of the regulations. And so I think the 200 square feet makes sense because in some ways we could be helping the situation by reducing the square footage. But then we're going to create more parking and more stormwater concerns and more impervious surfaces and put more hurdles in the way for somebody that's trying to develop a use like this. So I mean, in my mind, 200 square feet makes sense. So.
I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, so.
Well, Tanner brings up a good point, too. I mean, there are all good points and there's, there's no easy or probably even right answer here. It's
And that's exactly it. I mean, there's a wrong answer. There isn't a right answer.
Yeah.
I'm at the point that I'm comfortable either way because I hear both arguments and they both are good to me.
Okay, then then I can be comfortable with 200. Because I think the likelihood of getting one is really low. But again, to repeat what I said before, that should not play into my thought process here. So I think we, I think we've we've agreed upon 200?
Sounds like it.
One space per 200 square feet and then the one per five seats in a restaurant?
Correct.
Right.
It sounds like we have a winner. All right, Matt, did you have, Matthew, did you have any, any further comments?
Yeah, I had one more comment question on the second page, restaurant carryout. Would this, I'm going to cite a local restaurant, just, just not out of any concern of theirs for parking or anything, just as an example of a location. I'm thinking of a place that's like Conrad's or any other place where you would go and you get carryout, but there's not really a notable, there's no square footage to it. But then there's the outdoor dining component. I actually don't know where that falls under these regulations. If that would fall under restaurant carryout or not?
I think they would fall under restaurant carryout.
Carry Hill Ice Cream would be another example, I think.
And I get, you know, and I guess those are hard to quantify as far as parking requirements because they don't really have any, I guess they do have net floor area because there's the floor that the employees work on, but
But the net floor area is tiny compared to the amount of parking, yeah, and the amount of parking that's actually required. So I didn't know if there's another way to calculate that that might be.
Well, to give another example, it's not in Lunenburg. The Kimball's place in Westford. Then we used to go there when I was a little kid and the only parking was there right in front. And now they've expanded, they've probably got four or five acres of parking across the street because they've expanded so much. So there is, it goes both ways. I mean, sometimes a lack of parking is a detriment to a business and they want to expand. But we need to find a comfortable spot for a minimum.
And I think, you know, and I, you know, it's been only recently that I've ever been to that Kimball's, but they're also sort of an outdoor entertainment facility at this point.
Oh, yeah, that's a mini Disney. Yeah.
So I mean, I think they might get hoovered up into a different category or two parts.
But that's a good example of transition. And I think you'd be hard pressed to find a point in time where it transitioned from takeout to, well, I guess when they put, yeah.
Well, it's
Growth is a good thing, but it can be detrimental.
It's the Pinkberry effect. When Pinkberry Frozen Yogurts opened and was only one location out on the West Coast for a while, it was just accepted that a $50 parking ticket was part of your cost of going to Pinkberry. Because it was a business that was much larger than the nearby Rosen facilities allowed.
Do you even get parking tickets in Lunenburg? Oh, yeah, I've seen them down at Shady Point.
I'm sure we can.
I've seen them.
I mean, if we're not super concerned about it, that's fine. I'm just, I'm imagining that a takeout place that opens, gets really popular. Now there's cars up and down the block, quote, block, quote unquote, but up and down the road for, you know, 100, 200, 300 feet and people lining up. And I'm worried, I'm kind of worried about that, but maybe that's just being overblown for no reason.
And I'm trying to think of how we would address something like a con- And I'm trying to think of how we would address something like a Conrad's or or Cherry Hill if someone were to build it new.
Yeah, I really want to be clear. I I only mentioned Conrad Conrad's because I've been really craving a good seafood meal.
And they're they're local and they're they're good examples of of.
Yeah.
Sort of like the exception to the rule. Because, you know, reading this and thinking about it, I I always pictured like. An indoor restaurant where you just go in and you pick it up and they might have a table or two where someone might sit down, but they're not. Relying on their business being people eating there. And I I guess we could, we could do it by service window. And have so many spaces per service window plus employees on the larger ship. But. That. I I, you know. Do we do four spaces per service window? You know, you expect it, you know, I've been to Cherry Hill and and. The line's been eight or nine people deep and. That's that's a busy time, but they're not needing that all the time, you know, so what's the balance?
Can you do it by, or is it it is even worth doing by outdoor seating space and putting it at a lower standard than we would for indoor seating space?
I I guess we could do, how about instead of net floor area? Well, three hundred square feet of net floor area. And or. Area dedicated. To no. Because, I mean, if you look at Cherry Hill, they have a fairly limited outdoor seating area. And people tend to go and and use all all different parts of the parking area as as outdoor consumption.
It's true. Or or is the is the answer that this is just the correct, this is the correct. Number and the town needs to lean, i- if something like this happens, the town needs to lean heavily on enforcement. In that instance.
That hasn't worked out in the past.
And that's a that's a hard one to do because. Most of restaurants that are are going to be like what we're talking about are busier. In the evening and on the weekends. And and so then you're you're leaning enforcement onto the police department.
Yeah.
And that that's not really there. I mean, other than if there's a traffic safety issue. That's outside of their general purview.
Mister.
Sorry, I'm sorry. What did you just say? Is there a traffic safety issue?
Yes, that that would be, that would be, one would expect the police to address that. They would not be, but it would be outside of their purview to say, oh, well, you don't. Have enough parking or you're not parking in in accordance with your site plan.
Okay.
Which I I think is is the enforcement that that was originally being referred to.
Okay.
Yeah, and the only thing I'd add along those lines is I think unfortunately with. This particular use, it's hard to quantify. How quote unquote busy the restaurant is. You know, if you take a use like. Kimball's versus Conrad's versus, you know. Friendly's or Presto, I mean, each restaurant functions differently. And some restaurants do a higher percentage of dine in, take out. And so it's just, it's a moving target, really. You know, I think what we've got here is a good foundation, but unfortunately. I don't think there's a one size fits all approach to this. You know, I mean, COVID nineteen has taught us many lessons along this. I think. Most restaurants have seen their percentage of takeout. Far surpassed dine in. And so, you know, I think we just need to do the best we can and make an intelligent approach. I had a couple of other comments on a few of these uses. And not to get away from the outside dining. Or a carryout use, but I had a couple of things I wanted to just mention, if I may.
Sure. I think we tend to resolve these things one by one, haven't we?
I guess it's. The dining is the only one that's unresolved, but. I I think Tanner makes a good point. I don't know that there is a a solid one shot solution.
So go ahead, Tanner. We'll we'll let that mull in the back of our minds.
On the residential uses, so single family, two family, multifamily, family and townhouse. Two dwelling and two spaces per dwelling unit. How are we quantifying? The spaces like it, so if somebody builds, you know, a two family home and they've got a two car garage, does the garage space count? As parking spaces or is it just parking spaces outside the unit? And I guess my my question there is, you know, I've got a two car garage and I'm. I'm lucky if I can pull a four wheeler into the. On most days. You know, it's stuffed full with Christmas ornaments and lawn tractors. And so I guess that may get into a a question of. Definitions more than.
Yeah, I I mean, I I would, I would infer that it would be for exterior spaces, not for. Parking garage or garage parking. Other than a use like. Emerald Place where they have a dedicated parking garage that was part of the. Design and permitting. But for a single family uses, I would expect it would be outdoor parking.
Okay.
Is that worth, is that something we need to clarify?
And I'm actually looking to see if we define. Parking.
So in in my experience, I've always counted garage spaces as as a parking space.
So have I, so would I. Although I understand Tanner's point because you can't get two cars in my garage either. You can get one.
And then the other question I had was. And I I'm not quite sure if this is a COVID nine thing and nineteen thing or marijuana thing, but. I just look at the queue building outside one of the local marijuana shops. And it. To me, it looks like it would be a parking concern. And I'm not sure if. The people standing outside the building in line to go inside. Are part of a security protocol, like they only allow so many people into the retail part of the store. For security reasons, or if it's a COVID nineteen protocol. And they're trying to, you know, limit capacity in the building. But to me, it seems like if you're going to queue people up and reduce how many people can go into a building and then come out quickly. You have a greater need for parking. You know, I mean, we have a lot of convenience store, liquor store, gas station. Coffee shop type uses and the vehicle turnover is pretty rapid. People. Running, grab their coffee and they're gone two minutes later. But I feel like in this environment, we seem to see more of this queuing. Issue and and again, I don't know if it's a social distancing COVID nineteen protocol or if this is a security thing where. They only want so many people in the building at once for security reasons, but. And I don't know that it would really apply to like a marijuana transporter, but certainly to a retail. Establishment, that's something we may want to consider.
Yeah, you know, when I was looking at this, I sort of went back and forth. I think all of the marijuana uses, with the exception of the dispensary and the retailer. Fit pretty well with the standards for similarly. Defined uses. I, you know, I I see your point and and I I think that's a reasonable. Approach and and that's why at the outset, I said, I think the other. Option would be to categorize both retailer and dispensary with adult use and have them. Have their partner outlined as part of the special permit process.
I like that idea.
And I think that might go ways to assisting in. Addressing each each individual petition on. The facts of their case and the merits of of what they have as far as location and. Access to parking.
And they already have to be before us anyway. So we're not, we're not putting an additional burden on them in the same way.
Yep.
Yeah, I I hate to do that to a business that otherwise is going to have an easy time establishing themselves, but. If they're already going to be in front of us. That lets us make sure it's handled correctly.
And I think that's why it made sense with adult uses.
Yeah.
And I know that other communities have. Permitted or discussed permitting. Marijuana retailers and either required or suggested that they. Conduct business by appointment only. And in doing so, have limited the number of appointments they can have in a period of time. And that gives the ability to have a little bit better control on parking and access.
Okay, I I like that. And are there any other special permit? Issues here? I mean, other uses that are.
Well, I guess my only concern with. Moving the marijuana uses to, you know, adult use is it makes it more difficult for. A potential applicant to really identify what's going to be required. And I think in the case of the marijuana uses where they have a lengthy process to go through with the state. I would hate for them to identify. A particular location and have something like this that's kind of gray. And go through the whole process, get their license at the state only to come back. In front of the planning board and find that, well, geez, we want one space per, you know, two hundred square feet of floor area and you can't. Make it work at this particular location. So, I mean, I always prefer black and white over. As required by the. Special permit granting authority because I feel like it it just makes it a lot easier for. Applicant to take a look at a particular use and a particular piece of real estate and. Get a good understanding of where they're going to be at the end of the process. So I don't know, it's it's a little bit of a challenge, but I would certainly err on the side of having something that. Is square footage driven. And maybe have some sort of an allowance. In terms of, okay, you're by appointment only. This metric applies, you're open to public, no appointment required, then you need to build it out in this fashion.
So I I'm Tanner, I'm going back to your original premise for this. And I'm wondering if. The queuing actually impacts parking at all. I know the queuing impacts physical space taken up by the queue. That's not, that's not a question. But I don't. I'm kind of thinking it through and. If it's, if it's hitting X people per hour, it's hitting X people per hour regardless of if they're standing outside or inside. Am I wrong on that? Like like, I don't see how the queuing changes.
Well, it would change the the parking requirements based on how many people are in line. So if you're operating under the premise that they only allow three or four people in line, then the parking spaces, it's going to resolve itself, but. You know, I mean, COVID nineteen has been an anomaly in the whole scheme of things, but. I've driven by credit unions where they have police officers outside and the lines. For the drive through is going like all the way around the building. Well, that's certainly an anomaly, right? Because typically the lobby's open and people can go to the ATM and they can go inside and there's six tellers. Now all of that traffic's been reduced to two drive up lanes. And so now you have a huge queue and so in. In the case of a marijuana retail establishment, I feel like the same thing applies if you have. A store and people are walking in, getting their product and walking out and. Entering their vehicle and leaving, well, that's one situation, but if you're only allowing two people in at a time and now there's a line out the door. Now you need more and more parking spaces.
I I guess I I'm not following the logic on why you need more parking spaces if it. If it's processing. I mean, so that those people queued on the outside would otherwise on a standard establishment. Just be inside. Doing their shopping without any kind of queue or anything else, so assuming that this is a security thing, I mean. Or is the thought that the the space is physically smaller because of this and so it had needs less parking spaces for that reason on on paper?
Well, I think what you're up against is if you if you compare it to, you know, the Walmarts of the world, not to. Pick any one business out, but say the rated capacity of the building is, you know, a hundred people. Well, you can have a hundred people in there browsing, making their selections, making their way to the register and going through the process. But the minute you put a gate at the door and says, okay, now we can only have twenty people in the building. Well, now you're going to build a queue and those people need a place to park. And so now you only have twenty people in the building and those twenty people are making their selections, making their way to the register. There's only five people at a time checking out and going through the process, so. That's where your queue gets screwed up and the parking spaces get screwed up as a result. And again, I don't know if this is a security thing or if it's a COVID thing. I feel like we'd be doing these uses a disservice if we're just looking at COVID nineteen and. Building bylaws around it because hopefully it's a. More temporary situation and it takes its course and we move on. But it's just something that comes to mind as you go by some of these retail outlets and you see lines out the door. Well, if you see a line out the door, each person in line needs a parking space. And so that's just something to be mindful of. Whereas, you know, I think you compare it to a liquor store. If you walk into a liquor store, you walk in, you grab your six pack beer, you can walk out. Well, if there's only two people allowed at a time in the store, well, now a line starts to build. Those cars, those people would have come and gone in the time that they stand in line. You know, I mean, it takes me thirty seconds, if that, to get my coffee in the morning. I pay for it on the app and I walk in and I walk out and I'm gone. But if you put a security guard at the door that says, oh, Jesus, three people in the golf station right now, you can't go in just yet, well. I'm going to need a parking spot. So.
So if I could interject, what it's, what what the what the line out the door is probably going to do is simply increase. The time, like like trip generation and and parking is is accounted by. Like average number of people that come and average length of stay. So what's going to increase their average length of stay, it's not going to adjust, it's not going to address the people, number of people that come. So I I think it, I think Tanner has a point. That. It's gonna, it's gonna increase the need for parking, but it's because the longer stay, if somebody typically would come in ten or fifteen minutes. And then leave. And now they have to wait ten or fifteen minutes before they spend their ten or fifteen minutes, you effectively doubled your length of stay. So without without impacting your. Your attraction factor. I I can see that these marijuana places have a large traction factor. And it's gonna, it's gonna increase the trips. So I mean, I I I. So I mean, I, I, I see a, I see a point to both your, your, your comments here. And, but there's also another thing about. Queuing, when I first heard the word queuing, I started, I thought about vehicles, not people standing out in the door. But when we do these parking calculations, they, they assume that the aisle and the turnarounds and everything is free and clear. And safe to use, but if you get cars that are queuing, then that's no longer the case. And you could have somebody sitting in a, in a, in a drive aisle for ten or fifteen minutes while. Somebody parked in a space to use that drive aisle to exit can't maneuver. So that lends to congestion and necessity for more spaces as well.
I wonder if we're overthinking this because this is already a category that puts. Your, your morning coffee at Cumbes, your trip to Target. And your trip to the pot shop, I mean, if we include that or the liquor store or wherever, all on the same. Playing field for one space per two hundred square feet. So I, I wonder if we're putting. I mean, they're already talking about some very different businesses and we're kind of assuming they're pretty similar in terms of parking needs.
Well, well, my, my, the, the reason I made the comment was because we, we were talking about making it. Decided in, in the special permit process versus putting a number two. And I, and I think that, I think that marijuana is. As, as much of a difficulty as it may be for the applicant, I think that marijuana is, is. That odd of a topic that it quite possibly. Should be decided at the special permit. And that's just my thought, so.
Personally, I agree with Tanner that we should have a standard. Because while I understand that it can be varied during the special permit, I do think having. You know, guidance and, and black and white requirements is. Is really the most fair way you do it for an applicant. But I also agree with Mr. Reiner that we may be overthinking it, and I think that. You know, I, I think personally the way it's currently written makes sense to me. And I think that as with any other, you know, bylaw regulation, we have an opportunity to change it if it doesn't work. I think marijuana establishments are new for us and I think that making it by square footage right now makes sense. I understand the concern about, sorry. I'm sorry, I have an emergency. I, I'll be back.
So, looking at it as putting a number on it. This, this category that it's in doesn't currently account for. The inclusion of employee parking. It, it infers that the employees are included in that two hundred and fifty square feet. And it, it certainly sounds like between whatever security there is, door. And the need to process people through the facility. Perhaps it, it would be better to pull it out into its own category and require two hundred and fifty. One space per two fifty plus one space for each employee on the largest shift. And that might free up a little bit of additional parking without taking it to. A significantly different level, but specifically addresses that it is. A slightly different type of retailer than your big box retailer or your grocery store or your liquor store. But isn't creating. Something well above and beyond what other parking in that same or similar category would be. And I would expect that through any special permit process, the applicant would be required to identify. What their operation looks like and, and what their employee shifting would look like in their, in their full build-out.
It sounds reasonable, I suppose.
I think I'm comfortable with that. I think it matches the idea that there may be more backend room. More, more back, backroom area than we would see an employee-only area that we might see at a traditional retail shop.
Does that cover some of your concerns, Tanner?
Yeah, that makes sense. And I don't know, I mean. Mr. Barney, maybe you can shed some light on this in terms of. Are there limitations security-wise on these uses? I know we spoke at length when we were developing the bylaws, like how the whole process worked and. Security requirements and so on, but I don't know if, it just so happens that. Marijuana has kind of come along with COVID nineteen, most of these uses. It, you know, so I, driving by some of these facilities and seeing. How it all works, I, I can't tell if it's COVID nineteen that's requiring lines out the door. Or if it's just the security protocols or whatever that's in play, but.
I do, I mean.
Be mindful.
You drive around a lot more than I do, the one that I, I think I've seen most regularly, Mr. One. Just over the, the line in Fitchburg. And I, I've seen lines outside, I think half a dozen or so is probably the, the largest line I've seen. And, and there's usually at least a couple of people milling around out front. I do know that there is a gatekeeper requirement through the Cannabis Control Commission. So essentially you, you get there and you have to check in and provide affirmative ID that you're over twenty-one. Whether or not the, they've been required to significantly reduce their interior. The amount of people allowed in, inside the building at one time, I don't know, it would again stand to reason that, that with COVID that, that's the case. I, I know that you do, like I said, you have to go in, you have to be positively IDed, you have to then be checked in. Through the building through a locked door, you do your transaction and then leave through a separate locked door. But again, I, I haven't seen anything that says. You know, that they limit the number of people on a regular basis. But with COVID, I, again, I think that they probably have limited them. And where we only have two recreational facilities that we can permit. It makes sense to be cautious in, in how we do so. As far as parking, parking goes among others.
Yeah, and just knowing that there's a gatekeeper is helpful information in terms of. You know, nobody stops me and says, can you produce positive ID to go in and get your coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so in that situation, in my mind, it says, okay, well. If I'm going to a repair shop, a pawn shop, a laundry store or a liquor store, one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. Makes sense, but for marijuana use, it's probably more like. Two hundred square feet because there's a gatekeeper and that adds a step to the process. I mean, it, it would take me longer to check in than it would to grab my coffee at the golf. So, you know, I think that. Leads to calling these uses out and creating a specific standard that says, okay. One space per two hundred square feet plus a space for each person on shift and. That way we've got a clear bylaw that makes sense to the applicant, so.
And is the word okay with reducing the two fifty to two hundred?
I'm okay with that, but would that be in conjunction with one per max shift?
That was what it sounded like Tanner was proposing.
Is that the case, Tanner?
Well, that was my thought, just to take into account the fact that you've got a gatekeeper and, you know. I'm, I'm trying. That makes sense in terms of, okay, there's going to be a little bit more of a queue. Because you have somebody that's checking people in, but you also have extra employees, right? I mean, you know, if you take a liquor store that has one person standing behind the counter. Checking people out and maybe one other staff member, now you've, you've got a security detail at the. Or a receptionist, however you want to term it, that's stopping people at the door, so. I think it makes sense in, in my mind.
No, you definitely have more staff. Per square footage than you would typically see, so I think it makes sense to call them out separately.
Okay, so we, we, we seem to be in consensus about the two, two hundred, one per two hundred square feet.
One foot employee per employee on the larger shift.
What I'm hearing.
I'm not really convinced we need to go down to two hundred, but I'm also not, don't feel strongly that it's that big a deal, so I'm totally fine with going with it. Because others have stronger feelings than I.
And, you know, from what I have seen. It seems like these are not, I mean, we're not talking big box or even like. Drugstore-sized facilities, so that, that reduction of fifty feet requirement is going to yield. Some parking spaces, but I, I don't believe will be exorbitant. You know, we're probably talking at least a handful in most cases.
That's a good point, Adam, thank you.
Yep. Very good. So, is, is Paula still on her emergency?
It certainly appears that way.
Okay. So we got through Matt's comments and Tanner, did we get through yours?
Yeah, that was all of mine. I don't know if you want to review the marijuana. Thoughts now that Mrs. Bertram's back.
I could hear you.
Okay.
And I'm done with the two hundred feet and I'm fine with the, the changes that you guys discussed.
Okay. Very good.
I did have one question on another issue. I'm just trying to find it now because now I'm all discombobulated. And it's on the private camp. Use, you have one space per five sleeping campers. There are some day camps that don't have sleeping campers, they have, they have. But they have drop-offs and the reason I bring it up is having been a Girl Scout leader for many, many years, I know that. There are times where you have people at camp that are not. You know, you might have an event that parents are coming to or that, and, and we don't have anything for day camps.
Should we call it one space per camper, per five campers?
Yeah, I, I would, I would just take the sleeping out, I think.
And what's our number for, if we're talking about daycare, are daycare, are day camps classified as camps for us? That, that's one question because it, day camps aren't always considered the same use as an overnight camp. They're often meeting different hurdles, so I just don't know.
A, a camp by, and I know this because I'm actually working on.
Right.
Is, a camp is defined in accordance with state law. And by the Board of Health, so there's a very clear definition of a camp. So we're not talking about a daycare center, but camps, whether they be overnight or day camps, have much of the same regulations. There's just an additional section for sleeping accommodations, but they're all required to have the same healthcare supervisor, the same. You know, toilet and sanitation and facilities, et cetera, so much of the regulations are the same.
That's going to be different for. For, for zoning, so we define private camp individually, which is what I'm trying to pull up here. Private camp. Land under single ownership and management, having tents, buildings or other shelters, not including recreational vehicles or mobile homes for recreational, educational. Recreational or educational purposes and accommodating four or more people for two or more days or portions thereof. So it would cover a daycare, so taking sleeping out makes perfect sense.
What's our, I can't, I can't see it right now and I'm just missing it. What's our daycare requirement?
I'm not seeing it, it wasn't.
I'm not seeing it on here either because we talked about it the last time and I wrote it in.
Yeah, it was in the other chart that we had. I thought.
I thought it was, I went through and I crossed out everything in the chart as I, as I did this.
Yeah, we had a big discussion about it, so it was there.
It was there. Yeah, because we talked about daycare, about eight children versus a private home, so it definitely was in that chart.
Well, what we need to add.
I'm sorry, it's, it's one per employee on the larger shift and one per five children.
Where is it in the chart?
It's not, it's, it's not in here because it, it was written separately, but it can, it's the same as private camp.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they matched because they would have similar pickup, a daycare camp would have similar pickup kind of windows and timeframe, so. Great, then I'm completely comfortable with that.
So I'd like to back up to when Adam read the definition of private camp, it was for, for four or more people, campers. So then wouldn't it make sense to have one space per four sleeping campers or? Four campers? And I was thinking that five campers, you're going to be hard pressed, when you go camping, well, when I go camping, my vehicle is packed. And I'd be lucky to get two people. Myself and somebody. You know, that's when we go car camping, when we go, when we go to the White Mountains, we've got, you know, one bag of gears and we could probably fit two or three people, but. Not all our gear, so. I, I, I was thinking that five people was, was a little high for one space, but. Especially for camping because. Often people bring trailers, that's not going to be accounted for.
This is a good point because we're, I was thinking of camp differently, but you're right, there's a difference between. A residential camp versus a daycare camp versus a campground.
And I think this is more geared towards campground, is it not?
Uh, management having tents, buildings or other shelters. So it appears that those facilities would be there for recreation or educational purposes and accommodating four or more people. For two or more days or portions thereof.
Yeah, so it's.
I, I mean, I guess it's an interpretation thing, I, I, it certainly seems. To lean towards. Yeah, I guess it could be pretty open, I read it leaning it towards where it says recreational or educational. That seemed to put it more in the camp for youngsters, summer camp, daycare, that kind of stuff. But now that you say that, I certainly see how that definition could be interpreted to mean what you're talking about. Like a K O A or something to that style of, of campground.
Well, I mean, and then to the, to the thought process that you had before, I mentioned that, then that would kind of. Include the possibility of having buses, right?
Potentially.
So wouldn't we want to make accommodation for at least the access?
Well, but we're just talking about parking, the access would be covered under any, any site plan approval.
Okay, that's true. I'm just thinking like, it's like, like a high school campus is, parking is laid out quite a little differently to facilitate the bus movement.
Yeah, I mean, similar to like the Y camp.
Right.
You know, they, they, they put the loop in so they can pick the kids up and drop them off and all that fun stuff.
So I, I had suggested going down to four, but now I'm thinking that maybe even, even fewer, but I, I would be comfortable with four, I guess.
Would it be worth splitting out? Campgrounds versus. campgrounds versus um uh whatever you wanna call day camps and overnight, it, it versus day camps and overnight camps?
In the long term, it would. But that would require creating another definition. Placing that into section four point one, placing it into the use table and then doing parking based on that. Um, not to say that that isn't something we can explore and do, it just, it, it changes the uh, it, it changes what we're doing now.
Got it, okay.
I, I would just comment that campgrounds, you know, when you go camping, you bring your trailer onto your site or your tent onto your site. And typically you have a parking space on your campsite. So that's part of your site, so I don't know the additional specific camp requirements. Parking requirements would be required. I mean, you pull into the campground, you park your tent, your trailer and your, and your, or your vehicle, in your vehicle, or, or if you're tenting just your vehicle, check in and then you drive to your site. You don't need a, a parking space separate from your site.
The parking on the spite, on the site wouldn't be qualified as a parking space?
To me, it would just be part of the site. I mean, I think that's, you would have to make sure that sites are adequate to provide parking for the recreational vehicle as well as your car. But I've done a lot of camping in my lifetime and I've never been to a campground that doesn't have a parking space for you to park a vehicle.
And, and some of them designate too between tent sites and R B sites because of the, the size that they are, the way that they have the hookups and all that, um, so, but yeah.
What if we kept it as one category? But split out parking based on needs of the facility, and this may not be doable, but so you need one space per rented site. Plus one space, so you have a couple of categories, knowing that most facilities will not hit every category within. So you'd have one space per rented site plus and that would be the space at the site, one space per five, uh however we phrase it. Uh, five sleeping campers, no, cause that's really gonna.
Campers, five campers.
Yep, per, per five um campers not in rented sites.
Excluding rental.
Excluding rental sites.
What if we just took this into the site plan approval? I mean, we don't have any private camps right now. It, it, it requires a special permit to, to operate a private camp. And then it would require site plan approval based on the special permit for the use. Um, and it just sounds like we're, we're peeling the onion back and, and we're looking at so many different potential operational models for a private camp that codifying each one of them would either mean separately defining them and codifying them or having a parking table that someone looks at and goes, I don't know what this means.
Well, let me make the comment that the only private camp that we have currently, uh, that I know of, uh, has extreme parking issues.
That's a shady point.
I wasn't gonna name him, but yes.
But even if we were to adopt this, it wouldn't apply directly to them as they currently exist.
No, it wouldn't, but I mean, i- if somebody comes to Lunenburg or somebody lives in Lunenburg and wants to make a private camp, then that's gonna be what they think of. And, and I guess why would, why would the people that wanna create a private camp be less put out than the marijuana people by having, having a gray area?
True, true.
I mean, I didn't, I, I thought it was a good idea for the marijuana, because for one, we've only got two, two places that we can put it. But I mean, a private camp, we're more likely to get ten or twelve of those, because there's a lot of open space that's not used and just my two cents.
I think it might make sense to look at a community that has camping and, you know, and, and look at what they have in, in their requirements, and I can think of, you know, there's one in Littleton, that Minuteman Campground. And be interesting to know how their regulations are, are written. Um, I don't know about day camps, well, the Mass Audubon, um, I mean, they have day camps, I don't know what their parking requirements are.
Well, there's the Y camp in Lancaster, isn't there?
Right, yeah, the J C C camp. And this camp green area in Harvard.
Now, do I remember correctly that we're under a time crunch with this?
It needs to be submitted next week. So you, you can still make changes. Um, but we would need to have a document to submit. Now, this seems to be the one place where we're having questions. And, and as we sit here, talk about it and, and trying to, to hammer it up, if we put one space per five campers, plus one space per dedicated campsite, plus one space per employee on the larger shift. Or one space per dedicated overnight campsite to avoid daycare camps having to put in crazy amounts for each little picnic table that they designate uh, a group as their site.
I think that makes sense, I think that, that might make sense, and as I said before, and we can tweak it if we need to, but I think makes sense.
I mean, that way, at least there's something in there and I can pull stuff from Littleton and Lancaster and Harvard. Uh, and the board can look at it at the next meeting and if you feel that uh, you're, you're happy with what's there and you don't need to tweak it, then we're already covered. And if you're like, no, we, we really think we should tweak it, uh, we can try and get the change in prior to the warrant being printed. And if not, uh, we can make a, a floor amendment for, for that one parking requirement.
Now, let's also not forget that the private camp is gonna be more likely the durable dustless rather than the pavement.
Correct.
And it would be less of a hardship. And it would also serve as a dual use to have more parking than you needed. So I, I don't, I don't think upping the requirements on a private camp is gonna be largely detrimental. I think that whatever, whatever is required can either be used by parkers or used for some other purpose. You know, the, all kinds of things.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. Now, I wonder if we wanna include, well, this might be getting in the weeds, but I was thinking about trailer spaces. Like if, if it's, if it's a camp on a lake, the people are gonna wanna bring their boats, their jet skis. Uh, if it's a camp uh with trails, then they might wanna bring, uh, well, their snowmobile, because that's the only thing you can ride in the trail. I don't know, just a thought, trailers take up a lot of space. But it, it, it's, it's gonna, it's not gonna be your typical parking area, I guess is what I'm getting at. You're gonna need, you're gonna need larger, wider areas for, to facilitate the, the larger vehicles and the vehicles with trailers.
Oh, but those are all gonna be at individual campsites for the most part.
Well, if you've got one space at an individual site and the guy's got a trailer, is it gonna stick in the driveway?
True.
Is that something the business kinda ends up self-regulating though? Because if you, if you can't fit trailers at your sites, no one's going to leave their trailer separate from their vehicle. They're not gonna take their trailer and leave it somewhere else. So in order to get people through the door, they're going to need to provide those sites, or am I being overly optimistic there?
I think a little from column A, a little from column B.
Yeah. Uh, have we heard from Tanner on this?
I don't really have any comments. I mean, I, I can see both sides of the equation in terms of most of these ca- campgrounds use gravel parking areas. So I think this is a lot like restaurant takeout businesses, like depending on how busy the campground is. How, what percentage of campsites turnover versus longer term rentals? It's just, it's a hard thing to quantify. So.
Yep.
But I think putting a number on it helps, because at least for a potential applicant that's looking at this use, they have something to go by versus doing it through the special permit process, but.
So campsites have, campgrounds have to be through special permit, correct?
Correct.
Do we have the uh ability and is it considered appropriate to waive some of the parking requirements during that process if they are a more, if they're saying, but we're only doing X?
Uh, well, they are allowed by Brighton Recreation District. Which I think we own most of now. So the special permits through the zoning board, not through the planning board?
Got it, right.
Uh, uh, I mean, I guess in theory, it could be appropriate for them to waive certain parking requirements. I think uh probably more likely would be something to Matt's point earlier where they're creating parking out of hard pack. And if the, they came to site plan approval and they needed a hundred and twenty parking spaces. And they said, guys, if we ever use seventy, we'll be shocked. And the board looked at them and said, well, you know, we really have to have the hundred and twenty. And they said, okay, well, we've got this field over here. And it's level and it's flat and it's gravel and it drains and we can fit fifty parking spaces on it and here's a drawing that shows you how. The board could say, we'll accept that and we'll approve that as part of the site plan, saying that this is parking. And then the kids play in the parking lot all day, because they never have a need for that use of the park. And it would be the same as if it were paved or gravelled and, and the board was indicating that, that that was, was parking at that time.
Fair enough.
Okay. So the direction you got was you're gonna eliminate sleeping, it's gonna be just five campers?
So I'm actually gonna, is there any other comments before I run through what I have?
Um, not for me.
Okay, so we don't currently classify parking spaces as in or out of a building. It just says parking spaces. If the board has a preference, I can add language in prior to the table that all parking shall be outside of the building, uh, unless otherwise approved through any approval processes. Or if you wanna count garages, that, that's fine too.
Well, we, we would have to put different language than that, because we, we couldn't say that they couldn't park inside the building.
Correct, uh, for, for, it would say for accounting purposes or for, uh, for, for compliance purpose, something to that. Yes, yeah, obviously, yeah, can park it. Uh, so I need to add in daycare, which uh is one space per five children, plus one space per employee on the larger shift. Private camp, sleeping is coming out and we're adding plus one space per overnight camping site.
Did we, did we not, okay, so the, the definition of private camp is four and spaces per five?
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't write that down. Did we, did we agree four was the number?
I don't think we got consensus on that.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna just brush that, pull that through myself, I, I wanna, I wanna have buy-in. Um, and it, it's just, it, it's just the difference between our definition and the parking requirement.
As it stands now, does that mean that they wouldn't need any spaces if they had four campers?
They'd need spaces for the employees on the larger ship.
But there would be no space that you could.
Actually, no, cause you always round up.
Right.
I'm comfy with five then, but I, I don't see huge needs for a change, but if this is really compelling, I, I'm flexible on this myself.
Okay, well, on the, on the flip side of that, that token about having gravel area that's not used is these people are, these, this type of use is more likely to have open space that's available, so um, I guess I'm fine with five.
Uh, then we go down to bed and breakfast and it is switching to one space per non uh resident employee at the location or employee not residing at the location on the larger ship. Uh, hotel motel, uh, it will be one space per sleeping room, plus one space per employee on the larger ship with a conference facility and one space per two hundred square feet of conference area with a restaurant and one space per five seats. Marijuana retailer and registered marijuana dispensary are phasing on category. They will be one space per two hundred square feet, plus one space per employee on the larger ship. Uh, and that's all the changes that I have uh on there. And then I'm gonna get you definitions or uh parking calculations from Lancaster, Littleton and Harvard uh for camp or private camp or daycare camp or whatever they have defined as a facility like that.
I remain concerned about our restaurant carryout parking calculation, but I don't have any clue how to handle that better. So.
Yeah.
I, I'll, I'll also poke around for some restaurant carryout stuff. Um, or restaurant walkup or, or something like that and see if there's some uh compromise that we can make at the next meeting.
Oh, and, and by the way, Matt, um, Dave is uh open for seafood and I think he's gonna open his retail. I had, I had seafood last week from there.
Oh, great, rock and roll.
So I will submit this for inclusion on the annual town meeting board, or would you like to hold off till next year?
Well, we've come so far, we, we're kinda stuck on what? Pretty much two things, private camp and, and the uh carryout?
Yeah, I, I would even say one and a half.
Yeah.
I'd rather see it go through this year, even I would much rather see something that is ninety-five percent good go through than no changes.
So this, this is already to the, for the benefit as far as the carryout, because I believe if, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken that we don't currently count for carryout?
Correct. They would just be considered a restaurant.
But.
And it would be by table, so any walkup restaurant would, would not need any parking.
So shouldn't that read restaurant comma carryout only?
Uh, it should have a comma in it, yes.
I mean, carryout only?
Uh, carryout only was not in the definition when the board redid the tape.
Um, I guess, well, cause Conrad does have some stools, just COVID, you can't use them. I just I, I kinda would like to see that as an additional thing for restaurant.
Uh, a restaurant where food, frozen dessert or beverages are primarily sold in dispensable packaging, ready to consume and is intended for ready consumption by the consumer, the customer on or off the premises.
Okay, that's, you just read the definition of carryout, okay, good. Okay, um. So, did we add anything for takeout? add anything for takeout? Cause, I mean, a few years back, that was, that was the original concern.
Uh, we did not add anything for takeout, but. Our, our previous restaurant seating requirements were by table and didn't account for employees. So where takeout is kind of nebulous and, and hard to quantify. I'm not sure how one would, would do that because you could have two similar restaurants. And they can be the same square footage, they can have the same sized kitchen, they can have the same number of seats. And one restaurant could do two takeout customers a night and one could uh, be pumping through takeout. You know, 10, 12 people an hour. And, and I don't know how to to quantify that. And, and you know, and, and not require additional parking for a restaurant that, that doesn't use it or need it. And do so, you know, because anyone can come in and say, oh, we don't do a lot of takeout.
That's true. And then also to Tanner, it could be the same restaurant before and after COVID.
Is restaurant not carryout, like a standard sit-down restaurant listed on this?
It is, it is on the front page. Uh, it is.
With private club.
Just above private camp with private club.
Thank you.
Okay. Um. I, I think it would behoove us to get it, try to get it in for this year.
And, and we can, and I, I don't think it will be a problem and I can have it to the town manager tomorrow most likely.
How does everybody feel about uh? So, so spring or fall or next year?
I mean, I've always been preferential to Springtown meeting because we tend to get better turnout. And so anything that encourages people's ability to contribute to the process, I would be in favor of. I think we've got things pretty well nailed down and, you know, down the road, if we need to tweak something here or there, I think we go ahead and do it.
I completely agree with that. I, I think it should be Springtown meeting and I agree that if we need to make changes, we can, we can do that.
And I agree, I think it's pretty well put together. I just didn't wanna push it and have the board say, oh no, we, we really think we should wait.
And, um, and then also it's still open for um uh, modification, right? On the floor?
Correct. You can always modify on the floor and oftentimes it's, I think it's, it's uh, about four weeks before the town meeting that it goes to print. So if something were to change, if we decided that uh, oh, we found a great definition or great calculation for carryout restaurant parking, we wanna substitute it. As long as it's printed correctly in the warrant, it will be taken up at the floor.
Okay.
I mean, so we, we try not to do that, but if it's something that is, is relatively minor, it's, it's possible to do.
Well, we did that last, last year on one of the bylaws that we submitted, didn't we?
Uh, we may have. I think there may have been a word or two that had to change for, for one reason or another.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with trying to get it into the spring.
Okay.
All right. So are we on to a procedure for submission and review?
Yeah, and I, you know, I mean, we don't need to discuss this too much. It's just, it's the changes that we talked about the last time around. I'm still waiting for uh, response from the board of health. They're understandably a little bit busy right now uh, with all the COVID stuff and trying to keep other things going. So I just submitted it back. I left it on the agenda if anybody had comments or wanted to talk about it. Uh, it sounds like the board wants to move away from the rules and regs, so uh, I leave it to you if, if you wanna have further discussion.
Well, I think, I think the sooner the better on the, the rules and regs because um there's not a lot of land left that can be developed. Well, that's not necessarily true, but um the easy stuff has been used up a long time ago. I don't feel strongly one way or another. I do feel strongly that we should get into the master planning. But that doesn't uh, that doesn't make me less concerned about subdivision. What does everybody else think?
I agree.
I mean, from my perspective, master planning is a more critical thing to look at from the town's perspective. I mean, not to say that we don't need to address some issues on the subdivision end of things, but I think as a community, we've got some real issues to address between old primary TCP, future of town hall, Ritter, uh, Turkey Hill. I mean, there's just a whole host of facilities issues that we can address and we've got the tools to do it. We've got the population study, we've got money that was appropriated at town meeting that hasn't been spent yet. So let's get some of this stuff working and I feel like some of it, if we enter into a contract with MRPC or any other consulting firm to write a chapter of the master plan, we're gonna have some downtime depending on how busy we are with other things while they're doing their work in order to give them time to tackle that project, we could be looking at other things. So um, I mean, I don't, I don't think one needs to take priority over the other. I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time.
Sure.
Well, also on the flip side of that, the um, subdivision rules and regs uh have, have validity and substance and, and not, not master plan doesn't have substance, but they're enforceable. Master plan, as we've seen, gets written every 10 years, supposed to, and show pretty much. I mean, it's a, it's a wish list and it's a, it's a roadmap to how to get from here to the wish list, but there's, there's no force, there's no enforcement. As far as, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but it, it's pretty much just a wish list.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's slightly more than a wish list, but it, you're right. It's, it's a, it's a guidance document that outlines uh, in one snippet of time, what the uh, people who participated in the master plan uh, desired to see uh, as the future rolled on and outlines objectives to meet the goals that, that people put forward, but there's uh, very little that requires any individual body to adhere strictly to what's in the document.
And I'm not really sure how much we could address the, the disposition of the buildings that Tanner mentioned.
Again, I, I, you know, really what, what the master plan's intended to be is a, is a consensus document amongst the members of the community who come out and participate and uh sort of uh, and, and we've talked about this a bit uh, over the years and, and it's part of why I suggested creating a master plan committee because the idea is to bring as many folks into that decision-making process as possible, both through surveys and, and public outreach and visioning, but also through uh, a variety of diverse voices in, in the creation and uh moving forward of the individual chapters and their goals and objectives.
Well, I agree that getting diverse opinions and people involved is key in any master plan, but I would disagree that we need a master planning committee to do that. I think we have a planning board that is quite capable of doing that. And I also believe that the recommendations of community facilities is absolutely part of the master plan. Um, when looking for grants, et cetera, that's gonna be a key component of obtaining funding. And if you look at the grants that are awarded, it specifically in many instances refers to the master plan and the long-range planning of the community. Um, so I would disagree that the buildings and the facilities are not necessarily part of the master plan. If you're talking about recreational facilities or um, you know, municipal facilities, public safety facilities, those are often incorporated in the master plan of the community. And if you look at our prior master plans and especially the most comprehensive, there are specific recommendations in regards to facilities and buildings. Um, so I would disagree that, that those are not a component of the master plan because you're, you're, it's really the planning for your entire community. So, so I believe that, that Tanner is correct and that those are components of our master plan. And I do agree that we need to get this off the ground. And, and I think that we are capable of doing that. And, and historically, it's been done by the planning board and there's no reason we can't do that. I think that we've been doing some good works, work on, on regulations and fine tuning regulations, but I think we do have to put a primary focus on the master plan and moving forward with, with um, revising it.
Yep. No, that's very good points. Um, and, and I mean, also we are, we are obligated to do this every 10 years. So we're, we're obligated and we're late. So.
Very, very late.
So yeah, okay, very good. So then I think, I think your, your uh, your question has been answered, Adam. So we'll kinda backburner this?
I, I, I mean, there's not a lot to discuss. It's just the changes that, that we talked about the last time around. So if, if you wanna review it individually and, and if there's something I missed or you have a comment on it, just let me know.
Okay. Very good. So I guess we're off to director's items.
So again, Greenland Botanicals, Wednesday, 7:00 PM, Zoom, all the information is on the town webpage. Uh, it is in the uh, news and announcement section. I will have to update you after having watched the replay. I won't be able to attend that meeting. Uh, I expect the set, the presentation to be similar to the one uh, given the last time. Hopefully this time around, more folks will be able to attend and uh, ask their questions or, or voice their concerns or, or comments. Uh, the other item is section 250 4.185, two-family dwellings. Previously, two-family dwellings required one and a half times the required lot size in order to be permissible. And uh, a few years ago, when the board rewrote the use table uh, and passed it through town meeting, that requirement was dropped. I, I'll, you know, somewhere in, in the writing of it, uh, it was, it was taken out. Uh, I was asked the other day about a two-family and, and in looking it up, realized that this wasn't fair. Uh, I'm recommending that the board put it back in. Uh, my recommendation would be to just add a sentence at the end of two-family dwelling. Um, we just put up the definition as it exists. So it says, a residential structure designed to house two single-family units from lowest level to roof with a private outside entrance, but not necessarily occupying a private lot and sharing common wall with adjoining dwelling units. Uh, I would just add a sentence that says uh, two-family dwellings shall have 1.5 times the required lot size in any district they're permitted or any district they're located. Uh, and that would uh, bring back the uh, requirement that had existed previously. Because the, the requirement is not outlined in the in section 5.2, uh, the dimensional requirements. It was, it was previously included in the definition.
Interesting. Now, we've got so many existing non-conforming single-family houses. Mostly camps turned into houses. Um, well.
Really old houses.
Yeah. We don't. We don't require lot size increase for um.
Accessory dwelling unit?
Accessory dwelling, right?
Uh, we don't, but we also significantly restrict the size of it.
Okay, yep.
Uh, I mean, there, there's, there's two approaches. We could look at this and say, well, it's a two-family dwelling, it's going to need a septic system that services bedrooms equal to a two-family dwelling. So you're talking a minimum of four in most cases and probably closer to six or eight. Uh, and is the requirement that folks install a septic system in many parts of town going to limit this possibly. But there is a, a, a fair amount of area that is currently sewed and this could theoretically uh be done on a 40,000 square foot lot in some, some places.
Well, wouldn't they have to, wouldn't they have to double their betterment if they made it to family?
Sure. But selling two $350,000 units instead of one $500,000 unit probably makes that betterment double worth it.
Yeah.
So essentially what you're asking to do, Adam, is to undo the clerical mistake that was made when the use table was changed.
Yeah, and, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm surprised it made it through. We spent 18 months doing this and it was read hundreds of times by lots of different people. Um, ultimately, I, I, you know, it's, it's my mistake that it wasn't in there, but um.
So we're not really discussing a change to the bylaw. It's simply when we did all the use table work, this was an omission that nobody caught. And so now we're just reverting back to what it's been for a number of years. And I mean, in my mind, if you're gonna have a two-family dwelling, there should be some sort of metric in terms of increasing the lot size in light of the fact that it's a two-family home, not a single-family home. So, I mean.
That's standard thinking, yeah.
Yeah, from my point of view, I think we just make whatever change we need to make to put it back to the way it was before we omitted it.
Yeah, so it would just be a second warrant article to modify that, that one section of, of this section of the bylaw.
Okay.
I mean, the happy part of it is this shows how many people wanna build two families in Lubin, Burbright now, but you know, it's been almost three years and, and this is the first time it's come up that I, that, that I've had to look it up.
And this only applies to two-family dwellings specifically, so not three families, four families.
No, those would be under uh, multifamily dwelling or townhouse.
Okay.
And, and those are both special permits, so.
So they're special permits, but do they require? So they're special permits, but do they require larger lots?
They don't have a defined lot size. So it would be up to the zoning board in their issuing of a special permit to determine if what is proposed is adequate.
So we did a three-family across from the public safety building recently.
That was a modification to a pre-existing non-conforming use, if I remember correctly.
Oh, yeah.
It had been a three-family previously and they went to the zoning board and said the structure is unsafe and inadequate, we'd like to remove it. And replace it with three dwelling units in this. Really adequate constructed method and they were granted.
Yeah. Okay, I, I'm not. I'm good with the, the, trying to get it back in there.
I'm in the same boat, good with it.
Okay, so I'll write that up and I expect a lot of public hearings on the parking chart and the. Two-family definition on, in the first meeting.
Very good. All right, so that you finished up with your director's items?
I am.
Okay, so the next one is appointments, the Agricultural Commission recommendation to the Economic Development Committee. Since I'm the chair of the Agricultural Commission, at our last meeting. We voted unanimously to recommend Mary Ray Holman. To be the appointment from the AgCom to the Economic Development Committee, which. Would fill up the quorum requirement and they could actually start meeting. And I believe our representative is Paula.
That's correct.
And I think it's Tom Alonso.
That's correct.
And. There was somebody else.
Kathy Clark and JC.
Oh, no, JC and Kathy are both the appointments.
Correct.
So the.
A business owner, but we, no one has come forward to that as of yet.
Okay. Well, I was just trying to think of who the ex-officios are because.
All of myself and then a business owner.
Yeah, I'm ex-officio.
So Paula, Tom and Adam.
And that, yes, and then we have a space for a business owner. To allow for someone in the business community not from, not residing in Ludenburg to participate in the conversation. But not have power in voting.
Yep. Okay, so that was, it was unanimous among the members and. The, she's anxious to get started, I know I've spoken with JC and Kathy as well and they're anxious as well. So. A little out of character, but I would make a motion that we. That we take the recommendation from AgCom and nominate Mary Ray Holman. Appoint, right, not nominate, appoint.
Appoint, correct.
Appoint Mary Ray Holman to the Economic Development Committee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, all in favor, Paula?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
And an I for myself, excellent, we have another full, well, another active committee. That's great. So I, I spoke with JC Friday or Saturday, I forget, and she's aware of it. And Mary Ray is aware of it, I will send an email out to Kathy. I don't know how we can.
I'll send an email to all the members and see if we can coordinate a time that they're all available and that we can find a Zoom room to. Meet on.
Beautiful. Super. So I don't think there's anything else to discuss about that.
There is not.
So then we're on the meeting schedule. Six thirty remote. March twenty-second, we've got a hearing for North End Subaru.
That's correct.
And then both of the things that we need to. We continue the other ones to. Now, do we continue the one tonight to the next meeting?
Yes, the rules and regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that will do that after Subaru and I'll have an updated parking chart. And the definitions for you at the next meeting too.
All right. Very good. So that's it on the meeting schedule, ongoing items? It's empty.
For now.
All right, public comment. Board comment? Concerns, questions? If there's nobody that has any comments, then I guess I would accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
In a sec, Matthew, excellent, any discussion about adjourning? Hearing none, roll call, Paula?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
And an I for myself, thank you all folks for a very productive meeting.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Don't forget to sign the Mylar.
Yes.